Thank you very much. Good evening. This is the regularly scheduled City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, March 19th at 6:00 p.m., and I'm calling the meeting to order. And will you please join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) allegiance to the Pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will ask our City Clerk to call roll.
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
J. David Reed.
Present.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Doug Lasbault.
Present.
Ed Yuliberry.
Here.
Sidney Bell.
Here.
Raina Cacciano.
Here.
Hunter Barton.
Present.
All City Councilors and our Youth Council representatives are present.
Thank you very much, and thank you to our three youth City Councilors who are joining us tonight, at least for a little while. I understand you have maybe a dance performance, a homework assignment, a test, so thank you for joining us while you can. Mayor Pro Tem Reed, do we have any changes to the agenda, including any additions or deletions tonight?
No, Madam Mayor, no changes.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. We always, the next item on our agenda at every meeting is what's called "Call for Public Comment for Non-Agenda Items." So this is the time in the meeting where if you wanted to talk about a dog park or a sidewalk, something that isn't on our agenda, this would be the time that you could come forward and address City Council, and we do time limits on this. Before I read the legal language, is there anyone here to make a non-agenda public comment? Okay, I see one hand, so hold up. I'll read the full thing, and then we'll do that. The "Call for Public Comment" agenda item is a time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concerns and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action will be taken on the matters raised during this time. Comments made during this time should be addressed to the Council and pertain to matters of at least general importance to the city and its operations. Please be aware that neither City Council nor City staff are expected to respond or engage in discussion or debate. Personal attacks and disagreements, personnel, and employment matters, the use of profanity or ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented slurs are prohibited, as is any disorderly conduct which violates state or local law and shall not be permitted. So, I think I saw one hand, a woman in purple, please come on forward, and we ask that you identify yourself with your name, and then either your address, or your subdivision, or your general neighborhood.
Hi.
And we do a three-minute time limit on non-agenda public comment.
Okay, good evening. My name is Tamara Schlegel. I live at 919 Heather Lane. I picked the best night to come and talk to you, but my home backs up to the Black Canyon Golf Course. And if you've played on that course, you know those beautiful cottonwood trees that align there. Well, my home is the only one where the tree sits in and hangs over my roof and also on my patio cover. I've spoken with Tom and Dawn at the golf course, and also your tree trimmer, or whoever handles your trees at the golf course. He says that has to be removed, a big branch, and I could cut it off above my property, but the problem, of course, is you're going to have a huge stump sticking out. It's not going to be aesthetically pleasing. And he said it needs to come down, or it's going to fall down on my roof next snowstorm. So, he said it's about $900. Tom said that he could, you know, fix it, take care of it, but then that never happened because Dawn said he wasn't going to do it. We have no money to take care of it. And then, of course, I see you put all these new trees. I see you're putting in a new driving range, and your own tree trimmer says all the trees on the golf course need to be trimmed. So before I go and spend money to hack off a tree and make it not look good, I'm just saying if you had trimmed everything up, and do trim it up, then I wouldn't be concerned about it, it wouldn't affect me personally. And so, that's why I'm coming to you today to ask, I guess I need your help. I don't know where to go from it now. I was just told there wasn't any money.
Thank you very much. And usually signing in is pretty straightforward. We usually have a handful of guests, but I want to make sure that we have your contact information tonight so someone can get back to you, and tonight that's a little more difficult. So I'm looking around to see with whom you can leave. Will you just, on your, I don't know if you're planning to stay or on your way out, make sure that Commander, Deputy Chief Cox has your contact information, and that is going to be the best way for us to get back with you.
Okay. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. I didn't know what else to do.
I understand sometimes your elected officials are your last resort, and we're here for you to do that, absolutely. And while you fill that out, I'm going to stall a little, but see if there's anyone else who is here for a non-agenda item that they wish to make public comment about. Okay. We're going to let her finish, making sure we have her contact information tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda then is Item 7, and that is Approval of the Minutes. And this is Council Consideration of the Minutes of the February 26th Special City Council Meeting, the March 4th Special City Council Meeting, the March 4th Regular City Council Meeting, and the March 7th Special City Council Meeting. And all of those minutes are in the packet. So would someone make a motion?
I move to approve the minutes of the February 26th, 2024 Special City Council Meeting, the March 4th, 2024 Special City Council Meeting, the March 4th, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting, and the March 7th, 2024 Special City Council Meeting as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we found the light switch, which is if you lean on the back wall, it's right there. It won't be the first time, it won't be the last time that happens. Can you all please go ahead and vote?
Greg?
See, we start with voting on minutes because it's kind of a great way to test the system so far. We're getting it dialed in tonight. Bear with us.
Is it twice?
No, because she's missing the two of their votes.
And I'm still not ready. Yes.
And the minutes passed unanimously, five to zero. Thank you very much. Okay. Next on our agenda tonight are comments from our youth City Councils, youth City Council members. Thank you guys for being here tonight. We love hearing what you guys are up to. Who's given us an update today, or are you each doing a little piece of it? Sidney Bell?
We're each going to do a little piece of it.
Fantastic.
I'm Sidney Bell, and I'm the Mayor Pro Tem of our Youth Council, and right now Youth Council is holding a food drive, and we have placed all of our bins in our locations, and Rain's going to list those locations for you in case you want to drop some food off.
My name is Raina Cacciano. I am a Service Committee Co-Chair on the Youth City Council, and our locations for the food drive are City Hall, the Visitor Center, Peer Kindness, Fabula, the Library, and the Rec Center.
Thank you, Sidney and Rain. When is the last date for folks to drop off food donations?
So, we did have it as March 25th, but we are thinking of extending that deadline since we got out the bins a little bit later than we wanted to, and so we're thinking we're going to extend the deadline just a little bit, but we don't know exactly to what date.
Okay, but the goal would be March 25th, so folks can start looking at what they could bring into your food donation drive. Thank you guys very much. And then, Youth City Councilor Hunter Barton, do you have any updates for us about anything?
No, they covered it pretty well.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any, that's it for Youth Council, right? I want to make sure you guys, okay, fantastic. Okay, so now we start in on the portion of our meeting, our action items, and so the first one is Ordinance 2660, and this is a second reading. And that means every time we have an ordinance, City Council reads it twice. An ordinance becomes law, one City Council has voted on it two times. And so, this is the second reading, which means City Council already voted on this once, and this is Council Consideration of an Ordinance Designating the E.J. Matthews Mercantile Callaway Brothers Building with an historic address of 346 East Main Street as a City of Montrose historic property pursuant to Section 11-3 of the Official Code of the City of Montrose. And I'll turn this over to our Staff Planner, William Reese.
Thank you, and good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council, and members of the public. There have been no changes to Ordinance 2660 since the first reading. To very briefly recap, the new owners of 346 East Main Street have applied to place the building on the city's Register of Historic Places, and we are moving forward with the historical name of E.J. Matthews Mercantile slash Callaway Brothers Building. This application was brought before--
Hold on, William, hold up for a second. Can you guys pass the word back that everyone in the hallway needs to leave or be quiet because we have business to conduct tonight?
Yeah, yeah, we're getting to get thrown out.
And I know it's frustrating if you're in the hallway and you can't hear, but we need to be able to hear what business is going on. We're going to be taking votes tonight, and Council, even if this is the second time we've done it, Council needs to be able to hear from our staff members, so thank you very much for helping. Okay, William, sorry about that.
That's okay. This application was brought before the Historic Preservation Commission on February 27th, 2024, where they unanimously voted to recommend approval of designation, finding that the building met the age criteria of being over 50 years old, and was eligible due to being associated with the history of downtown Montrose, having been erected as an early grocery store, and the building, although altered, is representative of 19th-century commercial architecture in Montrose, as reflected in the projecting cornice, segmental arch windows with stone sills, and decorative brickwork. Staff recommends approval of Ordinance 2660 on second reading as presented, and if there are any questions, I am happy to answer.
Thank you much, very much, Council. Any questions? I will say Mr. Reese did a fantastic presentation about this historic building with beautiful pictures when we voted on this the first time, and I think usually we would kind of go with that tonight, but in the interest of brevity, he has not. However, if you're interested in that historic structure, you can watch the council meeting from two weeks ago. It's really a cool building. Thank you, Mr. Reese. If there are no questions, then I would hold a hearing. A hearing is officially required versus public comment, which isn't, but in either case, a hearing gets a gavel. So, this is an opportunity for any public who wish to comment about the building's historic designation. This is an opportunity to do so. Is anyone here to comment about the building and its historic designation? Seeing none, I will close the hearing and accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2660 on second reading as presented.
Second.
Thank you very much. Please vote. Congratulations to the building. Okay, Item 10, Flex Park at Colorado Outdoors Land Acceptance. This is Council Consideration to Accept Lot 24 of the Colorado Outdoors Subdivision, Amendment 7, Reception Number 966762, being donated to the City of Montrose to support creation of the Flex Park at Colorado Outdoors. And I will turn this over to City Engineer Scott Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So really, no changes since we discussed this at the work session with the contract award as part of the Flex Park. Just a really quick summary, so that park is being constructed primarily with grant funds from the Colorado Health Foundation. As part of that, the owners of the land at the Flex Park, which is over in Colorado Outdoors, near, primarily adjacent to the daycare center there and the Flex Rec from the Montrose Recreation District. And as part of that, their contribution towards that project, the landowners are donating the parcel, which makes up that park. It's a little over half an acre, and generally, some of these are, some land transactions are smaller if they're being donated to the city or handled at a staff level, but because of its size, this is coming to Council. Generally, as a practice, we make sure that the city agrees with any land being donated to the city, so that someone just doesn't donate a patch of land they don't want to take care of to the city and then call us to take care of it, the kind of thing. So, that's why it's coming before you. Pretty straightforward, it just takes place as a deed, and then the city also signs off on a IRS form, kind of documenting the donation for their tax purposes. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Council, any questions for Mr. Murphy about the city accepting this donation of land? I will say for anyone who is more curious, as Mr. Murphy said, this item was discussed thoroughly at the work session that takes place prior to Council. This work session was held on March 4th, and those are available online. They are recorded, and anyone, if you want to ever attend a work session, those are open to the public. We don't take votes at work sessions, and we don't have public comment, but the public is always welcome to join us for a work session. It's where we usually get into the details of something like this land donation. So, that being said, I will accept any public comment at this time for anyone who wishes to comment about the land donation to Colorado, from Colorado Outdoors to the City of Montrose. Okay, seeing no public comment, would entertain a motion.
I move to accept Lot 24 of the Colorado Outdoors Subdivision, Amendment 7, for creation of the Flex Rec Park at Colorado Outdoors as presented, and authorize the city manager to execute associated documents.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, so please go ahead and vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to make a comment about that, that I believe that the money is to actually make the park from, comes from the grant.
Yes. Okay, Item 11, Public Works Facility and Rio Grande Extension Design Award. This is Council Consideration of the Authorization of $800,000 for the design and initial site cleaning for the Public Works Facility and Rio Grande Extension, including a contract with Blythe Group for an initial amount not to exceed $700,000. And I will turn this over to our Public Works Director, Jim Scheid.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. We also discussed this at length at work sessions, so I'll try to be brief. I don't think everybody came to listen about public works facility design, but if there are any questions, I'm happy to share maps or anything that we discussed at work session. But this authorization is the first step in the design of a public works facility and a Rio Grande Extension. It is quite a large project. It's a combination of both an architectural-style facility and a civil-style construction of a road.
Hold up, Mr. Scheid. Can you tell them to quiet down so we don't have to ask them to leave?
Turn your volume up just a tad.
We haven't heard the last question.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
Check, check. Is that any better?
That's as loud as the side ones go.
I'll speak up a little bit.
Yeah.
Anyway, this is a design contract for two very large civil design and architectural style design projects combined into one because of how close they are together and how dependent they are on one another, which actually be kind of co-managed between myself and Scott Murphy, our city engineer, one being, again, a facility and one being a road-style project. There's been a lot of preparation for this project. We've done a lot of work over the last several years in, on both sides, for the facility portion and needs assessments, space needs assessments, and also on the civil side in acquiring property to allow this project to happen. What we would accomplish in 2024 would be site layout, enough civil design to accomplish some site work in 2025, mostly regarding irrigation ditches and rough grading of the site, and also enough conceptual design of the facility to allow for detailed cost estimates by the end of the year so we can start to budget for the construction of the project. While we're doing the design of the facility and getting that layout done, we'd also be completing design of the civil portion of the road project, which would include extending the roads that are near there, Anderson Road and Ogden, and the intersections with Rio Grande. We will also be self-performing quite a bit of site work with city crews, including site clearing, demo, abatement of what is on the site now, and that is included in that $800,000 total authorization. The remaining structures are not safe and they're not able to be moved. They're simply just needing to be demolished. And this work would begin early this year and be completed before the end of the year. And so with all that being said, yeah, we're asking for the authorization of the $800,000 with a not-to-exceed contract for Blythe Group in the amount of $700,000 initially, and then we will complete design in 2025. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from Council? Well, I hope we've piqued our audience's curiosity about a public works facility and a Rio Grande Extension. If you want to know more, that was gone over with maps and drawings and timelines at our work session on March 4th, if you want more information about that. So tonight, no questions from Council. I will accept public comment if anyone in the public wishes to make comment about the Public Works Facility and Rio Grande Extension Design Award tonight. Great, I see a hand. So you need to come on up to the mic, introduce yourself, and you can tell us your address, your neighborhood, or your subdivision.
All right. Ralph Jones, and that's 61604 Falcon Road. Just curious, not on that extension, but are there any plans to finish the Rio Grande between West Main and Woodgate before going further? So anyway, I didn't see any more progress on that part of the Rio Grande.
So our city engineer would love to talk to you at length about the city's plans, but this isn't the right place to do that back-and-forth Q&amp;A. But Scott Murphy is available. He puts his cellphone right there on the website, and he can talk to you more about that in follow-up. It's going to be easier tonight for you to find him than for him to find you because of the sign-in sheet. Is that okay? Thank you very much. Okay. No other public comment about the Public Works Facility Rio Grande Extension Design Award, so I would accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize $800,000 for the design and initial site cleaning for the public works facility and the Rio Grande Extension, including a contract with Blythe Group for the initial amount not to exceed $700,000 as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so Council, please go ahead and vote. And that passes unanimously. Okay, next up is Item 12, and this is the 2024 Black Canyon Golf Course Renovation Award. This is Council Consideration of the Authorization of $257,345.45 for renovation and upgrade at the Black Canyon Golf Course, including a contract award to Stryker &amp; Company, Inc. in the amount of $214,727.2. And I will turn this back over to our Public Works Director, Jimmy Scheid.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, and yes, you said most of it for me. This is an authorization of $257,000 for renovation of the Black Canyon Golf Course, restaurant building, and pro shop. It's a roof replacement, replacement of several structural members within the roof that have been damaged, an HVAC system upgrade, and electrical system upgrade. The building has gone through many different changes, so the electrical system that was originally there was just not suited for what it's being used for today. This has been a project in design for quite some time, and was actually originally intended to begin last year because of the delay in that design process. We're just now getting to the point where we issued this for construction bidding. We issued an RFP earlier this year. We received one proposal from Stryker &amp; Company, and the pricing we received was what we expected to see, and so we feel like that was competitive bidding, and we have had quite a lot of positive experience in working with Stryker &amp; Company, especially on projects like this. And our, this project was budgeted for in both 2023 and in 2024, but the budget was not utilized in 2023, so we may need to supplement the budget in 2024. But otherwise, we're looking forward to the project, and we recommend awarding to Stryker &amp; Company. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Council members, do anyone have any questions? Okay, then I would accept public comment on this item. Is there any public comment on the Black Canyon Golf Course renovation award tonight? Okay, seeing no questions on that, I would entertain a motion from Council.
I move to authorize $257,345.45 for renovation and upgrade at the Black Canyon Golf Course, including a contract award to Stryker &amp; Company incorporated in the amount of $214,772.72 as presented.
Second.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, Item 13, Resolution 2024-4. This is Council Consideration of a Resolution setting May 7th, 2024, as the hearing date for the Blowers Edition Annexation, and I will turn this over to Staff Planner, William Reese.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. I do have a very brief presentation to share, so I'll pull that up on the screen here shortly, but as you probably remember, the Blowers Edition was started last year, and the applicants decided to amend their application. Unfortunately, due to state annexation laws, you can't just amend an annexation mid-process, so officially that application was pulled, and we are now restarting the process. This vote tonight is largely a procedural vote, as the state requires the city to vote on a resolution, which will set the official hearing date. We are proposing May 7th for that date, which will comply with the timeline as required by the state. And so since you've heard this before and will hear this again, I'll be very brief, but the applicant has removed one of the three parcels originally proposed to be annexed, as you can see here, reducing the annexation area to 12.94 acres. Everything else about the application is the same. It's eligible for annexation and is requesting connection to city utilities. They are requesting the designation of RL Rural Living District, the same as what they were requesting previously. We'll bring that request to the Planning Commission on April 10th. This is the annexation plat. As shown on the plat, the annexation meets the 1/6 contiguity requirement that the state sets forth, and the property is primarily shown as residential mixed density low on the future land use map. The proposal of RL Rural Living District conforms well with this land use. The property is within Growth Area 1, representing a cost-efficient area for the city to grow. And then we do have a signed revised annexation agreement. The property is large enough that we will be required to submit an Annexation Impact Report to the county. Again, this is a procedural vote to set the hearing date, and you are not voting on the annexation itself at this time. We do recommend approval of Resolution 2024-04 to set the hearing date for May 7th, 2024, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
The only question I have is, you said this will look familiar because we've seen it before. We normally would not see something before, but we've seen this one before because they applied before, pulled it, and now they're coming back.
Correct.
So that's what you meant by that, you've seen it before?
Correct.
Okay. Normally, when these come to Council, we consider them for the first time in a public setting where everyone has the same information, rather than talking about them at a previous work session. So I just kind of wanted to clarify that process a little, and correct me if I'm, okay. Any other questions from Council about this procedural vote to set the hearing date? Okay, then is there any public comment about this procedural resolution that sets a hearing date? Seeing none, would accept a motion from Council.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-04 as presented.
Second.
Thank you very much. We have a first and a second. Please go ahead and vote. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to Item 14. Item 14 is Resolution 2024-5. This is Council Consideration of a Resolution authorizing the filing of an Energy and Mineral Impact Assistance Grant under the More Housing Now Initiative through the Colorado Department of Local Affairs to secure funding for public water infrastructure improvements and other infrastructure improvements-- improvements and other infrastructure improvements for a proposed middle-income housing development within the city of Montrose. And I will turn this over to our Community Development Director, Jace Hochwell. Or not.
Jace has the flu.
Jace has the flu. Lucky Jace. So I will turn this over to City Engineer Scott Murphy.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So no changes since we discussed at work session, but a quick overview. Under the EIAF program of DOLA, they have a strong housing initiative with some pretty large grant awards. They're looking at, we're looking at pursuing the... Ooh, that's better. I'll start over.
Yeah, please do. This is such a cool grant opportunity, so...
Yep, so pretty large grant, kind of focused on housing, but has an infrastructure element to it as well. So this grant would be split between a waterline project, which we've been eyeing in cooperation with Tri-County Water to run a new water main down what is essentially North Hillcrest, I think technically 6600 Road when you start getting north of Locust, to create some interconnections on our system and create some redundant fire feeds for some of the urbanized areas out there as you get towards Bear Creek and them. So that'd be a city project portion of that that we've been, has been within our master plan and comprehensive, or in our capital plans for a while now. And then secondary to that is it would help facilitate additional housing. So they're eyeing a, it's all preliminary at this point, but 120-unit housing complex out there, that this would help support some of the infrastructure site work to make that project a reality. Again, nothing set in stone. This is just kind of the first step in the process that would authorize applying for the grant. Generally, any major granting agency wants to make sure that the council's on board with a grant application, so that they don't get too far down the road and realize maybe council wasn't on board. So they do that through a resolution, essentially to say, you know, go forth and apply. And then if we're successful, generally there's, you know, more formal applications that come, our follow-up information, sometimes interviews and things of that sort, where you go out and meet with the DOLA board. And then if successful, then we would integrate it into our capital planning efforts to work towards the project. So step one in a, what'll be a, you know, year-plus-long process. And yeah, happy to answer any questions.
I know the application deadline is coming up soon, which is why we talked about this just yesterday at our work session. Our normal procedure would be to talk about it 15 days before council, but yesterday we talked about this. Would this cycle, and maybe Jace knows, maybe, and not you, Scott, so I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but would this grant cycle mean that you perhaps, or the city would perhaps be presenting at the hearings if they pass the first step that are being held June 25, 26, and 27?
I'm not sure on the exact dates. That sounds, I mean, I don't expect it to be in that neighborhood because the applications are due April 1st.
Okay, perfect. Those are the dates, and the hearings are actually taking place in Montrose. Montrose is hosting the Department of Local Affairs EIAF grant hearings this quarter. And I'm really kind of actually excited and proud because I sit actually on that statewide board to review grants. Normally, an elected official would recuse themselves if their own city is applying, but by June, I won't be on city council because I'm term limited, probably still would need to recuse myself having taken this vote. But I'm really excited for the city to pursue this grant opportunity, and that, I will stop talking. Council members, any other questions about this? Okay, then is there any public comment about the city council authorizing the city to start the process of applying for this grant fund? Do not see any public comment, so I would accept a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2024-05 as presented.
Second.
Thank you very much. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Okay.
Madam Mayor, just a quick admin thing. So we set up the community room as overflow. I think it filled up the Centennial Room, which is across Centennial Plaza. It's for anybody, I saw some people live streaming on their phone in the hallway. So that room is available with a sign-in sheet. I'll break from here because that was my last item and let people know in the hallway as we go down.
Okay, and I'll let them know over this mic, which somehow just seems to be louder. Here's what we're going to do next. We are going to take a two-minute break, so, but don't, don't, 10? Okay, hang on. Here's what we're going to do. We have a community room, we have a couple different overflow rooms set up where you can watch. You don't have to be in the hallway on your phone, although you are welcome to sit in the chairs downstairs on your phone, but on the big screen in the community room at the police building next door, at a little room downstairs here, or now we've added the Centennial Room, which is off Centennial Plaza and was once the very first fire station in the city of Montrose. And so we're going to take a quick break, and also when we resume, we're going to do a little switcheroo up here. Mayor Pro Tim Reed is next in line to be mayor, and usually how we do that is the transition with elections that happen in April. The mayor, Pro Tim, with the consent and the vote of the rest of council, becomes the mayor. And Mr. Reed and I talked and thought this was a great opportunity for him to get a chance to sit in the hot seat as a little bit of a job interview for the job of mayor. So why don't we take a break, allow folks to get the message that they can see it in these other rooms? We're going to switch up, and you all can stretch your legs. Thank you so much. Oh, wait, 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 hold up, one more thing. People in those rooms will be able to do public comment. Okay, so just, just if, okay, so we're going to make sure that if folks want to make public comment, at least adhering to our 11 o'clock rule that they're allowed to make public comment. If you are in this room and you have no intention of making public comment, you can stay. That's fantastic. You could also, like, go watch it downstairs and let someone come in who wants to make public comment. That's your call. We want to make sure that this works for everyone. We're trying our best. Okay, we're going to take a little break. Thank you.
I wonder if it's possible to get to the restroom.
Our youth... Hold up. Here we go. All right. Listen up for a second. Listen up for a sec, guys. Hey, so our youth city council members thought that some water might be in order, and they've got some cold water. So if you need some water, our youth city council members are here to help you out tonight. Their food drive is currently going on.
Could everybody start? If you haven't gotten to your seat yet, go ahead and do so. I'll give you a couple more minutes before we get started here. Is that better?
Oh, yeah.
Good. Just let me know if I get a little low. I tend to talk with my face down, so... Okay, this is item number 15 on the agenda, consideration of the declaration to be a non-sanctuary city. I know that's why everybody is here tonight, and so we're going to be as orderly as possible, but I would like to first get a few housecleaning items taken care of. I'd like to see a show of hands of all of those who wish to speak to this issue. No, sorry. We're going to maintain decorum here tonight. There will be no applause. There will be no laughing. There will be no booing. There will be no outbursts, and I'm very serious about that. This is going to be run in a safe, sane, and civil way. You know, we're all neighbors in this community, friends and neighbors. We may have, we may be passionate about ideas, and we may have differences of opinion, and that's good. That's okay. This is civic engagement, but let's be civilized about civic engagement. I beg you, please. Please understand that your neighbor may have a different point of view than you do, but that's okay. That's, please, no outbursts. So it is okay to have a difference of opinion, and that's why we are Americans, that's why we're citizens of this city. And if we ever lose sight of that, we can't live together as a society, and we can't control what happens in Washington, DC by ourselves. And what we are dealing with today is a fallout of that, and I understand that. But as I said, before we begin these proceedings, I'd like a commitment from each and every one of you that you're one of you that your comments will not be hurtful, harmful, attacking. I want us to all have the opportunity to say what's on our mind, but please do it with civility. Now, I'd also like to have a show of hands of those who think that the reason that we're here tonight is to consider declaring Montrose as a sanctuary city. Because that's the rumor out there now. We've been getting emails for the last two days about Montrose declaring itself to be a sanctuary city, so you all understand that's not the issue. I take it by your silence that that is correct. Going to read a couple more instructions here before we commence. Please be aware that neither city council nor city staff are expected to respond or engage in discussion or debate when you come up here to speak. You'll be given your time to speak, and then we will not respond to it. We'll go right back to, right on to the next speaker. If you, if someone says what is on your mind and already has said it, due to the volume of people that want to speak, please just come up and say, "I agree," or "I disagree," but please don't repeat the same thing. Now, I'll also say we do have an eleven o'clock rule in place. We normally allow three minutes per comment. With the number of people, let me see the show of hands again of those in this room that want to speak. Can somebody take a count? Okay. Does somebody take an account?
Deputy Chief, do you know about, you let us know that no one in the Centennial Room intends to make public comment. Do we know about the Police Community Room? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, so there's, what did you say, forty here? Forty? So that's two hours. I'll let you weigh in on this. Do you want your full three minutes?
Yes.
Okay. We do have an eleven o'clock rule, and so we're governed by that. And eleven o'clock means that at eleven o'clock, we have to close the meeting, so. So that's fifty-five now. Okay. All right, well, we'll see how that, how that goes. So we will allow three minutes per comment. If a member of the public does not use their full time, you can't pass it on to someone else to take the balance of your time. You alone are allowed three minutes, and if you take one minute, then that is your three minutes. Please refrain from any personal attacks and disagreements, personnel and employment matters, the use of profanity, or ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented slurs, as they may be considered disorderly conduct which violates state or local law. And as I said earlier, please, no outbursts, boos, laughter, or clapping. Okay, to set the stage for this discussion this evening, on March fifth, two thousand and four, a few citizens made public comment at the city council meeting here regarding an influx of international migrants immigrating into the U.S. and Colorado, and requested that the city council pass a resolution declaring Montrose as a non-sanctuary city. On March sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, Montrose County passed a resolution to declare that it is not a sanctuary county. On March seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, the Montrose City Council called an emergency meeting to further discuss these issues. During that meeting, a motion passed to declare the city of Montrose a non-sanctuary city and to subsequently have the declaration be memorialized in a resolution. In order to take effect, any action taken during an emergency meeting must be ratified at a subsequent regularly noticed meeting. That is tonight's meeting, and that is the purpose of the agenda item. Should this action be ratified at this meeting, it will be memorialized with a resolution. This is the reason that the city council is not and cannot consider the resolution tonight, and why there is no proposed resolution in council's packet. I think it's important to note, before we begin discussion, that Montrose is not a sanctuary city, never has been, and there is no intention to declare Montrose a sanctuary city. So, for those of you who believe that A, we're not a, that we are a sanctuary city, that is incorrect. And by virtue of being a, by not being a sanctuary city, by definition, you are a non-sanctuary city. You can only be one or the other. Excuse the reference, but it's kind of being, like being pregnant. Either you are or you aren't, and that's what the situation is here. We are not a sanctuary city, and we do not have any intentions of, this council has no intentions of moving in that direction and voting on such an issue. In fact, we do not want to do that. So with that in mind, I'm going to begin public comment, and I'm going to start over on this side, on the front row, and those of you who, over here, let me see how many people over here would like to comment. Just, Rex, come on up. And when you, when you come up, as the mayor earlier said, please state your name and either your address or the area of the city that you live in.
First, I'm going to thank Mayor Protem, Mayor and Council. I'm here, I'm Rex Swanson. My backyard is the eleventh green of the Black Canyon Golf Course, so I could be found pretty easy. I'm here representing myself, my wife, and Neighborhood Watch. We have twenty-eight communities in, in, in Montrose. We are totally against the sanctuary city status. Legal immigrants are what built this country. We want them, we need them. We do not want and we do not need the illegals. Look at the horrendous things happening in the sanctuary cities across the United States. What does your budget look like? We have no idea financially what it means to open, open up our wonderful city. What about our schools, our hospitals, our medical facilities, our housing, our other public services? We are already a dozen-plus officers short in our police department. How are we going to stay safe? Tourism is a huge, is huge for our economy. Who's going to want to come to Montrose with all of that that could happen, being a sanctuary city? We already have cartels coming here causing problems from Grand Junction. Law enforcement already knows that. I know that, being involved in Neighborhood Watch. Montrose County turned down the sanctuary city status. We are asking you to consider the declaration to be a non-sanctuary city. Please help us be safe in our wonderful town. Thank you.
Anybody else on this side of the room? Excuse me, I said. I mean it. No more outbursts, please. Anyone over here? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Anne Holmes. I live in Columbine Point, and I appreciate all of you serving our city. As a retired journalist myself, I found it extremely inappropriate that a week ago, the Montrose Press had an article interviewing a number of immigrants, and the key word that they kept relieving out was the word "illegal." That's the operative word. I'm certainly not against immigrants. I'm third-generation immigrant from three of my grandparents. I certainly hope that we can stand and show that we are a non-sanctuary city by passing this resolution. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Leah Van Der Sluis. I live in Homestead Estates, and I, I stand with immigrants, legal immigrants. I'm married to a legal immigrant. We had to jump through a lot of hoops, spend a lot of money to get him into this country so that we could get married. So I am not against immigration, I'm, I'm all for legal immigration. But what I'm seeing in the different cities all around this country is a mess. New York's going broke. Denver Regional Hospital is suing the federal government because they've had to serve over a hundred thousand illegal immigrants, and they, they have no more money. We're seeing a lot of rise in crime, we're seeing just chaos, and we don't want that in Montrose. Thank you.
More hands up here, the gentleman with, with the green cap? Oh. The, the one closest to the front. And then you can be next.
My name is Mark Woodruff. I was born and raised in Montrose, and I live out on the east side of the city at the general area of sixty-nine-hundred Road. I pray that the Spirit of the Lord be present here tonight and to guide each one that speaks and that the council members who would lead this community. Amen. Each of us have come here tonight with a voice in what happens in this community. The key words tonight seem to be "legal" and "illegal," whether this community should become a non-sanctuary for aliens. The United States is or was a sovereign nation having borders to protect its citizens. The state of Colorado has a border, Montrose County has a border, and the city of Montrose has a border. All of these have set up governments to protect its citizens. We are not responsible for failing governments elsewhere and have no moral or legal obligation to care for their citizens through a sanctuary country or city declaration status. This is not a statement of bias, prejudice, or racism. We see the daily reporting of what a sanctuary status has done to other communities by allowing ten million illegal aliens into this country. Crime, schools, hospitals, and every service intended for its citizens is stretched to the brink of collapse and then ask taxpayers to foot the bill. There are no facts to support illegal immigration. It is human trafficking for the sole purpose, I believe, to the destruction of the American society and eventual control by this concurrent federal government. These facts play out daily. This council was elected by the people and for the people, its citizens. Do not allow these human traffickers to bombard you with false guilt of your true responsibility to your community. I say no to a sanctuary status, and you should too. Thank you. Trump 2024, and we'll get rid of this.
I'm not going to ask you again. The next time we do that, I'm going to ask the officers to please escort you from the room.
Thank you. Jim Bowen, and a new resident to the area here. Been visiting it for forty years and just moved here two years ago. Spent twenty-five years in the Chicago metropolitan area. When I was in Vietnam, I was told that I would have been a lot safer in Vietnam than in Chicago. But I'll tell you what, I want to talk about the second side of a coin here for just a second. We're talking about budgets, immigrants, illegal, legal, and so forth. I want to talk about one side, and that is that how many of us in this room, regardless of our attitudes toward the gun legislation and, and automatic weapons and all that kind of stuff, how many of us would put a sign in our yard that said, "This is a gun-free zone, and this house is gun-free"? Why would we do that? That's an open invitation. We have to realize that the people that are being turned loose from the prisons right now in Venezuela, these are not people that have too many parking tickets, okay? These are some pretty serious individuals, murders, rapists, you name it. Now, what they do when they look, and I don't know how many of you looked on Google. Look on Google for the states that are sanctuary. There are eleven of them. California alphabetically is first, Colorado is second, okay? Now, the interesting thing is, go one more level, and they actually talk about what all the things you're eligible for in these different communities. Free housing, free food, free money, for everything you can think of. And they've talked about the budgets that already they're having in the hospital. I'd like you to just think about this. A coin has two sides. One thing, we're talking about all the benefits, the other side is the crime. We don't need a sign that says, "Montrose is a soft target," so to speak, okay? Someone has said that, oh, this is just kind of, it really has no meaning to it and so forth if we say that we're not a sanctuary city. Yes, it does, because when the bad people look down through the list and they see the sanctuary states, they see the sanctuary cities, they think one thing: "soft target." And we don't need to do that to our fellow citizens and our law enforcement. Let's go ahead and make a statement. We're not a sanctuary city. You come here, we're going to arrest you if you break the law, we're going to prosecute you, but this is not a place that's soft on crime. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had fifty pages of comments, but in the interest of time, I will edit them a lot. Congratulations, Mr. Reed, on your promotion. Good evening. I am Sherman Hebine, one-six-zero-three-nine-sixty-two-ninety Road. My parental grandparents legally immigrated to the United States in nineteen-oh-five, settling in Pueblo. My maternal ancestors conducted the Underground Railroad at its northern terminus in Cass County, Michigan, helping many black people to escape slavery and achieve freedom. My comments tonight have been shaped by my personal background of legal immigration. Those who claim we should have open borders at all times are ignoring contemporaneous situations. There are people in countries that do not have the best entrance of the United States in hand and do conspire to injure and harm citizens in attempt to overthrow our republic. We must be careful to screen immigrants to deny entry for those who wish to foment unrest and conspiracy. Open borders allow unvetted and undocumented individuals to freely enter our country. My parental ancestors had to prove their worth and skills before allowed free reign of this country. This screening increased the value of potential immigrants and eased their assimilation in the American culture as valuable assets to our beloved country. Massive unlimited and illegal immigration causes massive problems. Some feel that declaring a city or town to have sanctuary status is a good thing, a democratic fulfillment of welcome while spurning immigration laws and incurring illegal behavior. My opinion of this is, why don't we prove ourselves capable of taking care of our current problems prior to throwing the doors open to any and all? Other municipalities that have righteously declared their sanctuary status are now faced with enormous problems while attempting to cope with a tremendous influx of unvetted immigrants. For Montrose to declare itself a sanctuary city is to place our lovely town in jeopardy of being overrun by unvetted immigrants swarming past our open borders. Please act to avoid the potential catastrophe inherent in endorsing sanctuary status to Montrose while endorsing the path of legal immigration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Donna Hebine. I live at one-six-zero-three-nine-sixty-two-ninety Road. I would like to talk just for a minute about the guest worker program. I support guest worker programs, but the idea that we need illegal aliens to work is ridiculous and not really a good argument. There are already, there is already a place with programs and temporary migrant worker services available. However, the application for these programs is down because illegals get the jobs, work for under-the-table pay, and no one is paying tax. for under the table pay, and no one is paying taxes. The fact is, illegal aliens undermine legitimate programs and it's a slap in the face to their fellow countrymen who are trying to do this correctly. The idea that illegal aliens are opposed, oppressed, and that the United States is their only option is inaccurate. It's common knowledge that dealing with illegal aliens is big money and immensely profitable on both sides of the border. All the so-called marches for freedom are well orchestrated acts and are facilitated by the governments of South America and Mexico in cooperation with the drug cartels, which have a significant presence in Montrose already. Illegals pay upwards of $4,000 per person to cartels to cross the border. After crossing the border, our generous U.S. government gives them cell phones, debit cards with values up to $10,000, medical care if it's needed, clothing and housing. These are all things and services that legal citizens must pay for out of their very own pockets. Who says that crime doesn't pay? Once the illegal alien crosses the border, they then must pay their debt to the drug cartel or smuggle drugs into the U.S. or resort to prostitution to pay back the favor of helping them to break the U.S. law. Illegals are transported in secrecy to locations across the U.S., to sanctuary cities to be paid for all over again. Unscrupulous individuals and organizations take over and disperse them to cities just like Montrose, all for profit, of course, or to keep jobs. When all of the gifts, all of the money runs out, taxpayers and legitimate citizens suffer, follow the money trail, greed works at every level. Thank you for voting no to being a sanctuary city.
Yes, sir. Come on up. Yes, sir.
You know me, I was here about a week ago. Rather than give my address, I'll just say I live out by the poorhouse. That's not a Dickens establishment, it's a liquor store. Following the, my name is Ken Hudson, as you know. Following the lady just before me, I have some interesting information. I was reading an article in the Los Angeles Times, which, as you know, is a very liberal paper. The article's dated February 9/24, is written by a journalist named Ariano. He's reporting on a poll taken by the L.A. Times and UC Berkeley, both of which are very liberal organizations. In the poll, the pollster has found that 63% of Latinos in California consider undocumented immigrants to be a burden. The article also went on to say that Latinos in California are becoming almost as skeptical of unchecked illegal immigration as their white neighbors. And as the specific performer just mentioned, I think it's because they have the most to lose. They are the ones who have the unskilled or the semi-skilled labor and those are the jobs that are in competition with illegal immigrants. Looking at our audience, I see hardly any Latino faces. I think people here probably have no fear of losing their job. I'm sure you folks have no fear of losing your job or your wages to illegal immigrants. So it's no wonder that even Latinos in California seem to have turned the corner on this whole idea of illegal immigration. I'm grateful that the council is not considering an affirmative statement that the city is a sanctuary city. However, as one of the speakers mentioned, we are in a sanctuary state. I also know that when Denver started shipping its illegal immigrants to other cities, other jurisdictions in Colorado, many counties and cities moved to say, hey, we are not a sanctuary city. So I think it probably makes sense to make an affirmative statement to that effect, to have the most effect, as also one of the previous speakers said. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for your time, counsel. I am Delaney White. I live in the Simroon Creek community. And I will be reading from an article from the Fair website, Federation for American Immigration Reform. On February 22nd, Venezuelan national Jose Ibarra illegally attacked and beat 22-year-old University of Georgia nursing student Lakin Riley, whom I can say the name unlike our commander of sleep. He beat her so much that he disfigured her skull. On February 22nd, police arrested Venezuelan national Renzo Mendoza Montez for allegedly sexually abusing 14-year-old girl in Campbell County, Virginia, in January 2024. On February 25th, Honduran national Angel Matias was arrested in Kenner, Louisiana, for allegedly raping 24-year-old, 14-year-old at knife point out of park. In separate incident, he allegedly stabbed a man in the face and back several times in an attempted robbery. When the police arrived, Castellanos Orioliana was standing in the middle of the street covered in blood. At the time he committed these heinous crimes, he had been living illegally in the U.S. and entered the U.S. Eagle Pass, Texas on October 6, 2023. Kenner Police Chief Keith Conley emphasized that criminal aliens such as him are particularly burdened for local law enforcement. We cannot verify an illegal alien as giving correct information as it pertains to names and date of births. It is not only a drain on place manpower, but financial drain on local law enforcement, budgets, and taxpayers' money. On March 2nd, Mexican national Raul Benitez Santana was beaten in Stoneh, Stonehommish County while under the influence of drugs, alcohol, and crashed into vehicle of Washington State Trooper Christopher Gad. The 27-year-old law enforcement officer died of his injuries. He leaves behind two-year-old daughter. Benitez Santana entered the U.S. illegally as a godaway over a decade ago. In May of 2013, he was arrested in Washington for driving on a suspended license and receiving 90-day prison sentence for marijuana possession. In October 2014, he was arrested again for driving with a suspended license. He received a 90-day sentence but served very little actual jail time. That's just a couple of lists. Please do not let that happen to this, this county. Thank you and God bless.
Let's see, is anybody else back over in this area? Yes, sir?
I just wanted to thank all you all for your time today and hearing us out on our thoughts on this. It sounds like we might all be on the same page with that. I do support us declaring ourselves a non-sanctuary city, for one. I'm sorry, Richard Buckingham.
Thank you.
I've lived here for about 12 years now. I came here because of the values that this town holds and the way it's structured. It's nothing like Denver and that's where I moved from. That being said, I think that we can get a lot more support of our leaders if we are well-informed of what actions are being taken, what directions you're trying to lead us in, and it'll help us stay focused on the problems around us rather than you as much. But that being said, it's just, I ask that, I support a lot of what was said behind me and I don't want to take up a whole ton of your time with that. Just know that the more information we have and the avenues that you go by sharing that to us, so that way we aren't rushing you to try and figure out exactly what is happening to our town and making sure that we can support what you're doing. I just hope that you can understand that. So with that, God bless you guys. Thank you for your time and hope it gives you wisdom.
Thank you. Any more over here? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Norma Marzenic. Before moving to this beautiful country in 1980, my name was Norma Guillermina Santillan Salas from Mexico. I love this country, but it's changing. And I'm here to tell you of what I have witnessed, what I have done through the beautiful jobs that I, that God blessed me with in this country. So I worked for an airline, Mexican airline at O'Hare Airport. And one of my duties was to translate with CBP and passengers who did not speak English and they were questionable. Sometimes they interrogated these passengers for half an hour or an hour to determine if they were, they had intentions to come to this country to stay. That is called vetting. Vetting is not happening in the open border. There, the people throw their passports, their identifications before crossing the border, so we don't even know who is coming in. I also, another beautiful job I had was in aviation security. So I was involved in, in doing inspections for airlines and airports and applying the regulations to keep our skies safe. What is happening that these, these people who are coming are being put on airplanes without being vetted. We have to show our identifications, not these people. And I have to say that there is nothing compassionate to open the borders and let these people come. The women and the children are being raped on the way here, not one time, not two times. Little babies are going through this and, and they're dying too, getting here. And I came from Mexico and I still have all my family there. Last time I went, they, they told me that the, the border, the, all the, all the highways in Mexico are now controlled by the cartels. So this is hurting Mexico, is hurting other countries.
Excuse me, ma'am, your time's up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please don't have me ask again for no applause. Yes, sir.
My name is John Brown. I live at 3275 Meadows Parkway. I volunteered for a good many years with a local charity here in Montrose that serves the homeless. We have tried numerous times to get the city to provide lodging, besides just providing food that Shepherd's Hand provides, for the homeless. We have a temporary facility that is only valid for six months out of the year when it is not used for migratory workers. If we cannot take in Montrose care of our homeless in Montrose, what makes me think that anybody else under this kind of a situation could take better care of illegal immigrants when they become so crowded and congested that our capital can no longer contain them, that they have to farm them out because all of their facilities are full of people that they've let in without being vetted? Every one of our people in this town that is homeless have been vetted in one form or another, either through the city police department, the sheriff's department, and other agencies to make sure that they are allowed to be in the area and provide them anything that we possibly can. Everything from food, medical, and during these winter months, a place to live. But I don't see how we as a community, if we can't handle our own homelessness here in this town, what makes us think that it's going to be an advantage for us unless somebody's holding a huge carrot in front of us and we want to jump after that carrot irrespective of what it's going to do to our community? I applaud all of you who voted to continue to keep Montrose non-sanctuary. And I hope that we continue with that process, but also, let's take a look inside and find out what we can do to help our homeless here in Montrose. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And right after you, sir, I'm going to move over to this part of the room. These folks haven't had a chance yet, so we'll come back to those over here that want to speak, but I want to move over here next and let these folks speak. Okay, you'll go next.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't see you. All right, thank you. My name's Matt Brown. I've lived in Montrose County my entire life. And I, I want to point out that I appreciate what you said at the very beginning where you, you tried to, it sounds like there's a little bit of misunderstanding about what's going on here. And so, so I appreciate that, but I wanted to see, I realize that this isn't the time for a Q and A. I realize that you guys can't respond to everything, but I think it would be helpful for the community if council could kind of help us what was under, what was on the table here. If there is going to be funds that we are given either by the state or the government, I realize their laws are, that they pass down, we all have to abide, abide by. But if, if there's an additional funding available, if we do become a sanctuary city, if that's a reason that we might consider, I'm not saying that's the right reason and I'm seeing a lot of no's. You guys are shaking your heads. But if there is some kind of benefit to that, if we could see both sides, somebody talked about two sides of a coin. I think myself and everybody else in this room, I think is against Montrose being a sanctuary city, but I want to know, I, I'd like to know from council if there is a vote on this and there is a local decision, if it isn't a law being passed by the state that we are forced to adhere to, if it can be a permanent decision, if it is a no vote, like forever and always, this will never happen in, in Montrose. I own a business here, I started over 20 years ago. I've lived here my entire life. I don't intend to go anywhere despite some of the things that I, I don't particularly agree with that's happened over the last few years. But if this is a local decision that we can overturn, that, that would be helpful to know, just so that the public had the information. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, you're, you're right, we don't, and I'm coming right back to you, I promise. We don't normally involve in Q and A this part of our meeting, but I, I think it does need to be made clear again that Montrose is not a sanctuary city. We have no intention of becoming a sanctuary city. That is not on the table. We will not open our public facilities to undocumented people who come here. We will not provide funds from the general fund of the city to assist them and we will not provide housing beyond what we have now. Now, there are nonprofits in this community that do what nonprofits do. We have no control over that. But the city itself is not going to become a sanctuary city and that's what I want to make very clear that people understand. If you are, if you are not a sanctuary city, and sanctuary city has a If you are, if you are not a sanctuary city, and sanctuary city has a legal connotation. It means that, number one, you provide shelter, housing, et cetera, and you invite, invite these folks into your community. It also has to do with law enforcement and basically instructing your local jurisdiction not to cooperate with ICE. That's what a sanctuary city is. That's not what we are, and it's not what we're going to be. So, I just wanted to clarify that again. And now, sir, it's your turn.
Counsel, thank you for allowing me to come and speak to you today. You opened this meeting with a American pledge of allegiance. It reflects your sworn commitment to the laws of the United States and the performance of your duties. Today, many officials publicly declare their cities to be sanctuaries wherein foreign nationals who enter our country illegally are granted safe haven from the enforcement of American laws. These officials are violating their oath of office by harboring and assisting foreign nationals who have deliberately broken our laws. This is the same as any American helping a criminal in evading, capture, and prosecution. Such a person is rightly considered complicit in the crimes of the criminals he is assisting. Likewise, city officials who have declared their cities a sanctuary for illegal immigrants have not only broken their oath of office, but are also complicit in the original crime of the offenders they are protecting, as well as the additional crimes that many of them freely go on to commit against real Americans. Colorado is now suffering as Denver, with the support of our governor, has also declared itself a sanctuary city. It is protecting and helping thousands of people who have, by their criminal behavior, broken our nation's immigration laws. Denver crime has skyrocketed. Denver's resources are so severely damaged that our governor and city officials are seeking to shift the financial consequences of their foolish decisions to the rest of Colorado. They are quietly busing illegals out of Denver and into other state communities. They are trying to export Denver's self-inflicted crime and financial problems into other areas of the state in a most deceitful and harmful manner. Faced with this terrible situation, the city of Montrose must preemptively declare itself a non-sanctuary city and resist in every possible way this invasion. It is being imposed upon the, by the dictates of an irresponsible city and a governor hundreds of miles away who have zero interest in our well-being. This situation is like that of our American ancestors who were taxed and abused beyond endurance by a tyrant king and parliament in faraway Britain 250 years ago. Montrose City Council, you opened this meeting with the pledge of allegiance to America to uphold our laws and to protect the interests of our genuine citizens. Therefore, we plead with you, do the job we entrusted to you, vote yes on this preemptive declaration of Montrose as a non-sanctuary city. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir? Okay, and then the gentleman in, everybody has green on, but the gentleman in the right, right, and Mr. Brown, you can go next, the guy behind you first. Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Can you hold up one second and let everybody move around here? They're kind of rotating through.
You bet, no problem. Am I out of time already?
Mr. Brown's going to go, then the, there's a gentleman behind you that wanted to go? Yes, sir. And then, sir, you're next, and then over here after that. Okay, we'll get to all of you, I promise.
I lost a second already. Thank you, appreciate being heard. My name is Richard Brown. I live on Sunnyside Road, and I guess I'm responsible for starting this to some degree a couple of weeks ago, but, but I certainly don't regret it. A lot of folks have already said what I came here to say and what I had prepared, so I'm only going to give you half a dose of what I had prepared. I'm going to urge you to honor the vote that you already made and have Montrose declared to be a non-sanctuary city, and I'm going to tell you why that's important. Right now, right now, there are illegal aliens in Montrose that have been smuggled in here and transported in here. They're in the schools, we got lots in the schools, there's at least three to four dozen non-English speaking kids in school, and the schools don't know what to do with them. I've talked with teachers about this very issue, and they're at a loss as to what to do. So, by remaining silent, you are saying, in my view, you are saying it's all right to come here, and the people who are already here, there must be a couple of hundred at least, the people who are already here, there's a grapevine. They're spreading the word, hey, they know, come to Montrose, it's easy, you can get away with it here. So, I urge you not to be silent. This is a very, very good reason to be proactive and take the bull by the horn, so to speak, and declare under no uncertain terms that Montrose is clearly a non-sanctuary city, which means we're not going to support anything. It's all right and well and good to say, well, we're not a sanctuary city, but we haven't said we're a non-sanctuary city, and that's the difference, and that's where silence will kill us. I'll briefly do this. Young lady mentioned Riley Larkin. Well, she won't be here tonight, of course, because she's dead. She was the nursing college student that was killed in Atlanta by an illegal alien, who was first arrested in New York on child molestation and endangerment, shoplifting. He was released by the New York judge and traveled to Atlanta and murdered Riley Larkin. So, the question is, who's responsible for that? Does anybody feel any guilt for that? Let me suggest something. Of course, the murderer's responsible, right? Probably so is the judge, so is ICE, and probably so is everybody who's engaged in illegal smuggling and dealing with human trafficking and illegal aliens. I'll stop it right there, other than to say, would any of you sacrifice your daughter or child so that the Larkins can have their daughter back? Probably not. You know, and the liberal groups said, hey, don't overreact, it's only one murder, right? So, it's, it's a collateral damage type of thing, so don't overreact. Well, let me ask you, how many murders are enough? The young lady went through a whole litany of things that are going on at this point in time, and I'll echo the comments about your oath. You took an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States, of the United States. You pledged allegiance to the flag of the United States, not a foreign country, not drug cartels, not anybody else, but us. So, let's start looking after us. Thanks a lot, appreciate it.
I, I mean it. The next time we have an outburst, chief, please escort him out. Yes, sir, you're next.
Thank you. I know I'm hard to see because I'm not that tall, but I try to hold my hand up. Hey, my name is Donnie Archer, and I live over here in Brown Ranch, and a lot of the things that I was going to talk about have already been said, but the tone, the tone of tonight certainly has been that we want to, want to let, let people know that we're not a sanctuary city, we're, we're a non-sanctuary city. No one has really dwelled on the problem on the east side of our state. Denver is a total mess. I have a dear friend that's a detective on the Denver Police Force. They, they've bought and leased hotels and put these people in neighborhoods, in neighborhood hotels, took them from downtown where they had transportation and, and had, and put them into these hotels. They have nothing to do all day long, sit, and sit around in those hotels. We've had a lot of people attest to the fact that there's a lot of criminal elements that are coming in across our border. He said that the police, this is December 20th, right? So far, through the 19th, the police have gone to that particular hotel 440 times in 70 days. 440 times in 70 days. This is the same hotel that there was, they found two dead bodies in this weekend in Denver. Denver is trying to shift this problem, not only because of the crime, as we've heard, but, but also because of the financial burden. Hospital is bankrupt in Denver. Denver General Hospital, they're bankrupt. We only have one hospital. They have multiple. We can't have illegals coming in here and not being able to pay for medical care, which they will get, at the burden of Montrose Hospital. We can't do that. You have an obligation to us, your neighbors, and your citizens, and your fellow veterans who served our country, not for this, not for criminal illegals in our country, okay? And, and the problem is much bigger than Montrose. Mister, Mister, the gentleman owns Amazon, Beavis, he just closed a factory in Iowa, let 1,300 employees go that are American citizens, and made a statement that he'll hire up to 42,000 illegals. No union, no problem. So, there's some pretty heavy hitters that are lining up and swinging at us. We need to be proactive, the gentleman said, and I agree 100%. We need to take a stance. We need to send a message to Denver, just like Aurora has, just like Lakewood has, just as Castle Rock has, just as Monument has, just as Pueblo has.
Sir, your time's up.
Montrose, Colorado needs to send a message to Denver and our governor in, in Colorado, and let them know we are not, we are not a sanctuary city.
Sir, your time is up.
Sir, thank you very much for your, for your patience with me, okay?
Thank you.
All right.
The lady in the red sweater, orange sweater? Sure, come on up.
Hi, my name's Sally Lovett. I live east of 6700 Road. So, I just have a few numbers for you. Illegal aliens killed 33-
Ma'am, could you pull the mic down? We can't hear you.
Sure, sure. Illegal aliens killed 33,000 Americans between 2010 and 2015. I don't have the current numbers between 2015 and currently. Breitbart, 2,000 Americans were killed by illegal aliens in the last year. Four and a half million in the U.S. illegal aliens drive without insurance. 43,000 illegal aliens have been convicted of drug offenses. 75, 75% are on the most wanted list in LA, Phoenix, Albuquerque, New Mexico. 40% illegal aliens are in detention centers in California, Arizona, and New Mexico, 48%. There are 53% burglaries by illegal aliens in California, New Mexico, Nevada, Arizona, and Texas. 63% of illegal aliens drive around without licenses. In Region 10, in this county, they don't have any money for the people in this county. We don't have money for our own veterans in this county. We don't have enough money in this county for our homeless people. They're living under bridges, they're living by the, by the rivers, and we want to have them come here? I don't think so. Tyson Foods has fired their entire, all of their employees. They're hiring illegal aliens. Why? They can pay, they can pay them for less, they can hire them without insurance, they can do whatever they want. I used to work for the city of, the Department of Labor. They don't have to pay them what they were, what they were paying Americans, cheap labor. They're firing American citizens and hiring illegal aliens. I don't think we want that for our country, let alone our county. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay, ma'am, you've been trying to get up in, in the orange there.
Hi, my name is Linda Zeeman. I appreciate your time, and I thank you for letting me speak before you. I hadn't planned on speaking tonight, but I do second 99% of what I've heard here this evening. A gentleman earlier made a very vital point, I'd like to reiterate that, and that is that not only are we not claiming to be a sanctuary city, but we are standing, taking a stand, we need to take a stand that we are a non-sanctuary city. I'm not going to reiterate a lot of what I've heard here earlier, but I want to speak from my experience living in Albuquerque, New Mexico, which once was a nice state. We have been a sanctuary city for many years. I lived there for over 20 years, and during that time, I personally was robbed four times. I've had my mailboxes smashed two or three times. I've had my car broken into twice. I have been physically assaulted. I've seen blood on the sidewalk after a girl was raped the night before, brutally raped, left for dead. My father, who actually lives in a nice area, quote, of Albuquerque, New Mexico, watched a takedown of an illegal alien who had assaulted a police out at Sandia Pueblo, who was now on the run, takedown, he was shot and killed. The prevalence, the level of degradation of a society is exponential. And I'm envious of so many people who grew up here in this lovely town, because I'm new here. I've lived here for less than a year and a half, and it's real easy for us to watch the news and see what's happening in other cities, but when it starts hitting home and you see it happen to you, I know a lot of the cops in Albuquerque, they're underfunded, they're understaffed because their hands are tied, so many of them, they're frustrated, and that just perpetuates the level of crime, and not easy crime, violent crime. Albuquerque, New Mexico is known to be either the first or second level of car theft in the nation. What you don't hear about is the murder rate. I know the cops who, who live, who work there. There are two major cartels, there are 5,000 children a night on the street who are sex trafficked, there is a gang that controls two corridors of Central Avenue. It's a violent place, so much of it because of, we are a sanctuary city. It's a lie, it does nothing but raise crime, it hurts property values, it harms citizens, there is nothing beneficial about it.
Thank you ma'am, your time is up.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir, over here.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate the time to do this. My name's Tom Smith, I live on Sagebrush Trail, but I feel like I spend more of my time at 800 South Third than more, most normal people.
Could you speak up?
Sure. My name's Tom Smith, I live at Sagebrush Trail. I just want to bring up a couple of things that I've looked up. US Code, United States Code 1324, bringing in and, bringing in and harboring certain aliens, knowing or in reckless disregard for the fact that an alien has come to, entered, or remains in the United States in violation of the law, transport or moves or attempts to transport or move such alien within the United States by means of transportation or otherwise furtherance of such violations of law. Knowing in or reckless disregard of the fact that an alien has come to, entered, or remains in the United States in violation of law, conceals, harbors, or shields from detection or attempts to conceal, harbor, or shield from detection such alien in any place, including any building or any means of transportation, encourages or induces an alien to come to, enter, or reside in the United States knowingly or in reckless disregard of the fact that such coming to, entry, or residence is or will be in violation of the law. So, we already have these laws on the books, and it goes on and on and on. Five to 10 years, 15 years in prison for certain violations of this code. It is not being enforced anywhere, and the judges need to be held liable. Thank you guys for stating emphatically that you will not become a sanctuary city. It is extremely important to the citizens in this county. It is extremely important to the citizens in this county. Okay, let me go down a little bit here. This is just some statistics from the Federal Bureau of Investigation. Eighty-three percent of warrants for murder in Phoenix are for illegal aliens. Ninety-six percent of warrants for murder in Albuquerque are for illegal aliens. Seventy-five percent of those on the most wanted list in Los Angeles, Phoenix, and Albuquerque are illegal aliens. Twenty-four point nine percent of all inmates in California detention centers are Mexican nationals. Forty point one percent of all inmates in Arizona detention centers are Mexican nationals. And it goes on and on and on. And the only people paying for this is the United States taxpayer. This can't continue. It just can't. So thank you very much for standing up for the citizens of this country.
Thank you.
All right, let me see another show of hands of who's still wanting to speak. All right, we're gonna, let's start over here on this side now, and we're gonna work our way back here. You'll all get your chance, but we gotta give everybody the opportunity. Yes, sir. Okay. Who raised their hand over here? Okay, against the wall, how many would like to speak? Okay. Why don't the four of you just come, work your way over here, and then we'll take you in line?
My name is Richard Rogers. I live on North Fifth Street in Montrose. I'm gonna flip the script a little bit. You've heard fear and loathing in Montrose. Those are all true facts, but what of it? What are the people who are carrying this burden of fear and rage doing about the border? There was an attempt to pass a border bill. One person said, "No," it died. This has become a political issue, not a problem to be solved, and it will remain that way until the end of twenty twenty-four. There is a will to do things about illegal immigration. There are people who care. There are people who want to find solutions, but there are also people who use it as a wedge against the community. This resolution is a negative, non-sanctuary. What the hell? Resolutions should be positive. Resolutions should make us a better community. This doesn't do that. Mayor Pro Tem, you've said over and over again, "Not a sanctuary city, not gonna be a sanctuary city, not even being considered." But look at what it's done to our community just to bring that subject up without any consideration of solutions. You can read statistics till you're blue in the face. I can name a thousand murders that happened in Los Angeles in the last six months. To what end? What are we here for? You're trying to make Montrose a better community. A negative resolution does not do that. You're not a communist dictatorship, but I don't hear anybody screaming to have a resolution to tell everyone else we're not a communist dictatorship. This is not necessary. If you want to have a conversation about illegal immigration, let's do it. Not fear and loathing and angst and rage, that does not solve anything. We had, we've got a few minutes, seconds. We have unified Montrose, which we did to help bring people past their political opinions to discuss problems and come up with solutions. There are problems related to illegal immigration, but I don't see much in the way of discussion of solutions. All I see is rage. All I see is hate. That's not making Montrose better.
Thank you.
Just one minute. I had some folks come from over here. Where did they go? Come on up, ma'am.
I would like to say some-
Can you state your name, please?
My name is Verlita Pacheco. I live in Fox Hills in Montrose. And I would like to say that my father was a Marine. He was in World War II in Guadalcanal. He was in Iwo Jima. He fought for our country. He fought for our flag. He has since passed, and I am so thanking God that he didn't witness what I witnessed in Denver, Colorado, which was illegal aliens climbing a flagpole, tearing our flag down, ripping it apart. It was so disrespectful. I do not want that in Montrose. I stand with being non-sanctuary. I have seen all the destruction in Denver that I care to see. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can follow, I had these folks come up the aisle, but we'll let them speak, and then you can be right after them.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for the opportunity. I know you've already heard from me. My name's Karen Sherman Perez. I live in the Homestead subdivision, but I want to say a few words on behalf of several of the people who are here who are afraid to speak and several people that I know, I should say it's much larger than several, many people, dozens, hundreds of people that I know, who are fearful to even come near the city council chambers tonight. I think it's really unfortunate that this issue has brought out so much fear and misunderstanding about immigrants and immigration. I've been fortunate to work on those issues, work alongside immigrants, with farm workers for the last twenty-plus years, and I can say that it has made my life, my family's life, and my community's life much richer. As a Montrose native, I see Montrose as a diverse and vibrant community that has been made stronger, thanks in part to our Latino Hispanic community, which makes up approximately twenty-two percent of our county. And that includes a significant number of immigrants who contribute in so many ways to make our community and our economy stronger. The city has made great strides over the last several years to be more inclusive and welcoming, working alongside nonprofits, community groups, to really pull in and engage marginalized sectors of our community. And that's beautiful. We still have a lot of work to do, but I think that passing a resolution that says Montrose is anti-immigrant, Montrose is not welcoming, Montrose is not safe, erodes all of the work that we've done. We've worked closely with Chief Hall and the Montrose Police Department to really build out community policing, to make people feel safe to report crimes or if they've been a victim of crime. If we pass a divisive anti-immigrant statement such as this, we are eroding all that work. We are saying that our community is not safe. And while I understand that this issue is about a potential busload of people coming to our community, we have to think about the impact it has on such a broad sector of our community. People are fearful. I heard from council members that they were responding to fear but not considering the fear that they were, that you all were causing when this vote was taken. So I really encourage you to vote with your conscience tonight and vote in the values and spirit of our community. We are a welcoming, inclusive community, and we have a long way to go to really make Montrose a stronger place for everyone. So thank you for the time tonight, and thank you for making the right decision.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And then, Neely, next.
Good evening. Thank you, sir. My name's W. Diaz. I've lived in Montrose for forty-seven years, and I'm going to hopefully report factually on some things that people have not yet heard. My wife is a legal alien. Her maiden name was Suarez. She came here legally, and she's been here twenty-five years now. She is furious that on the one hand, we have American veterans, many of whom are behind me, living in cardboard boxes in the alleyways of our cities, while on the left hand, we have illegal aliens living in three, four, and five-star hotels. Having said that, there are some statistics that I'm familiar with from a watchdog group, I think out of Virginia, known as Judicial Watch. All these good citizens behind me care about their votes. Judicial Watch has successfully sued the County of Los Angeles and had them remove one point two ineligible voters from their roles. They've also sued the state of Colorado. They've sued the state of Illinois to remove six hundred thousand. They have sued the state of Georgia and Pennsylvania as well for similar offenses. My wife and I were vacationing in Oregon, having a wonderful time, and we happened to listen to the television that night out of Portland. The anchor on that TV station reported to the public that there was an illegal driving school being run by four Mexican nationals who had given out ten thousand driver's licenses to illegal aliens. Another vacation, we were on San Diego, and we listened to the news there in the hotel room at night after our touring the city. And the reporter came on and just happened to say that the budget for the state of California in that past year was thirty-three billion dollars, of which twenty-two billion dollars went to support for illegal aliens. I found that rather astounding. It didn't seem mathematically that that would be true, but that's what the man said. So, and I agree with Judge Brown, you should be proactive and come forth and declare yourself non-sanctuary. Thank you kindly. Good evening.
Thank you.
I'm Dr. Stephen Ruplokal. I live on Solar Road here in Montrose. And recently, I had gone down to Yuma, Arizona, and I had lived in Yuma for a number of years, about over twenty years, and the town has been overwhelmed by the invasion that has come through. You go through the town, and you have gangs of eighteen to twenty-three-year-old males. There are no families that you see. You see all these people that are all eighteen to twenty-three. As a general rule, they've got their Starbucks, they've got their cell phones, and they are just wandering in the streets. We have friends that their son-in-law is a Border Patrol agent, and he is reporting that these NGOs, these nongovernmental organizations that are funded largely with taxpayer dollars, that are money laundered through these NGOs, are literally handing them five thousand-dollar debit cards when they come across. It's the type of thing they throw away their passports before they come across the border so that they can't be deported back to their point of origin. The medical services in the area are completely overwhelmed. The Yuma Hospital, which had previously been extremely profitable for the area, is now going bankrupt. The emergency medical services also is being overwhelmed with all the uncompensated care. It's a requirement for medical services to provide care, but the federal government is not reimbursing the funds. It's the type of thing where the whole area has been overrun, and it is not able to sustain what has come across the border. Do we really want to be in a position where we go along with state dictates in terms of welcoming this type of burden on our populace? It is non-sustainable. It's non-sustainable on the educational front, the schools, the medical systems, the infrastructure. It is not possible to be done. It is collapsing our society.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, yes, ma'am, right here.
Hi, my name is Lori Seim. I live on Sarah Lane. I've lived in this area thirty years. I'm heartsick at the possibility that our city council is seriously taking the notion that Montrose should bear the stain and internal strain that will come with labeling it a non-sanctuary city. Make no mistake, the heartless term "non-sanctuary" is fraught with undertones of racism, fear, and cruelty. It will be keenly felt by each of us and most certainly by our five thousand-plus Hispanic citizens. It conjures up the memory of the whites removing the youths from this land a hundred and forty years ago, not a history to be proud of or to emulate in twenty twenty-four. I believe that formally adopting the non-sanctuary label will erode the spirit of brotherhood which Montrose has been cultivating for fifty years. Believe that Montrose community, together with our councilmen, has the intelligence, resources, grace, and creativity we need to wisely navigate our city's challenges, including the possibility of an influx of immigrants. If this is so, raising the non-sanctuary flag is some kind of warning statement that this time will be, will of itself bear no good fruit. Rather, it will destroy the unified spirit we have worked so long and hard to cultivate here. The specter of rivers of immigrants descending on Montrose is born of fear. For us, it is not a fact or a given. We can face the future together, better as a unified city. I don't know if anyone saw this movie that's in town right now, Cabrini? What she said at the movie is, "What kind of world do we want, and what will we do to achieve it?" I feel safe in Montrose, and so many of the comments that I've heard here tonight are things that happen elsewhere. We have a beautiful city. We have a safe city, and trying to label us as a non-sanctuary city is appalling to me. So please consider another alternative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. I'm going to, this gentleman I know has been trying to get up here, you, sir. You can, yeah. And then I'll come back around this way.
Mike Bonenkamp. I live at twenty-two, one eighty-four, sixty-eight, thirty, wrote, "Most of everything I was gonna say has already been said, so I won't reiterate it, but I would like to say that I think it's very important that we do have the title of a non, or are known as a non-sanctuary city because I think that just is a good emblem to have out there for the problems that have been talked about." And I just, I guess I just don't understand, illegal is illegal, and I don't, I feel that helping illegals is aiding and abetting, and that in itself is just as bad as the crime that's being made. So I just want to go on record as saying I think it's important that we establish ourselves as a non-sanctuary city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Eliza Harriman. I live right off of Townsend here, and I want to say that I am against Montrose stating itself as a non-sanctuary city, mostly because this declaration comes with no policy change. People here are worried about their safety, about their finances, and this is just a label, and I don't really support labels without action. Also, people are worried about crime. I've been hearing a lot about people worried about crime. When research has shown time and time again that crime is not an immigrant problem, it's a poverty problem. And since we're on the issue of finances, if people are worried about our schools being underfunded, about homeless people in this town, then they should look no further than forty-five minutes ago, this council voted for a quarter of a million dollars to go towards a golf course, rather than helping the homeless, rather than helping schools, rather than any of the financial problems that people have stated here that they are very valid to be upset about. And so it's for that reason that I am against calling as a non-sanctuary city, and personally, I believe that nobody is illegal on stolen land. Thank you.
All right. Yes, sir. Matt?
Matt Goldisich, Black Canyon Way. When I came here, there were so many people, I went out and got a hamburger, so I don't know what, a lot of stuff has been discussed, but, so maybe some of this stuff is redundant. Some city council members say declaring Montrose a "non-sanctuary" city is only political showmanship. In my opinion, not declaring is a cop-out. Risking giving the impression more ambivalent, maybe even favorable toward illegal immigration. Clarifying language could accompany this declaration. The message being, "You're welcome if you've been properly vetted, have strong family values, are eligible to work in the United States, and want to be a contributing member of our community and pay taxes." Many of us came from families who met that criteria. My dad came from Croatia. We have no obligation to those coming to the U.S. illegally, in my opinion, and who expect our hard-working taxpayer residents to support them. Respecting U.S. sovereignty and law is the main price of admission here and not a cruel position for us to take. What's cruel is coming here with minimal skills, expecting guaranteed shelter, food, healthcare, and education, and not having that available later on after they get here, and forcing them into the underclass of society long-term. And that's what's going to happen. That's what's happening to a lot of areas. Mesa and Montrose Counties have declared themselves as "non-sanctuary" cities. I believe their demographics are similar to what we have here, so what would drive Montrose to think any differently than they did? If the city council doesn't feel comfortable after hearing all of this stuff, positives and negatives, maybe it should go on the ballot. But I think you know how the majority of residents really feel about this whole thing, so please, consider making this a "non-sanctuary" city. Thanks.
All right. Okay, I'm going to go to this lady here, and the gentleman right behind you, and the lady right behind you, in that order.
Hello, my name is Kaisa. I'm a resident of Delta, Colorado, and I'm the health equity advocate for Tri-County Health Network. I'm here on behalf of my organization to support the immigrant community members of Western Slope of Colorado. With that, I'd like to acknowledge that unless you are indigenous, we are all immigrants to this place. We value all human beings and their right to live in a safe community. Tri-County is a nonprofit organization committed to collaborating with our communities to improve healthcare for everyone. In 2021 alone, immigrant households brought in over $30 billion in total taxes to the state of Colorado. Those same immigrants are not able to reap the benefits such as social security or other documented citizens, like other documented citizens and taxpayers. By declaring Montrose a "non-sanctuary" city, it would cause community members to feel unsafe, it is unnecessarily divisive, and it would foster fear and discrimination in Montrose. It has a huge impact on the mental and physical health and also impact of people's trust in the people who serve them, like yourselves. Safety is at the core of human rights, and the lack of safety affects the growth and well-being of our community. We would like to ask you to vote no to this proposal in the interest of creating a more unified community. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Was somebody? Yes, sir. That's fine. And then you can come up next. Come on up here, and you can follow him.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Ryan Sedgley. I live on South 12th Street. Montrose in Colorado does have an immigration problem, and that's Texans and Californians coming in and driving up our housing costs. Now, seriously, I'm here because I'm disturbed what I think is an abuse of your power. You went out of your way to hold an emergency meeting to state that we will maintain the status quo. This is political theater, and you got your audience. You also created a lot of confusion, anger, worry, rage, and you caused me to lose faith and trust in you in the ability to govern in the best interest of our community. I'm not sure how to work with folks going forward. That makes me sad and angry because this did not need to happen. I moved here from Wyoming precisely because that state has politicians that have embraced performance and pageantry over good governance. It is ripping that state apart, and that is locally known as a small town with long roads. So it was a close state, but it's being torn apart, and it's heading towards financial ruin because of it. Young people are fleeing, women are fleeing, and it's experiencing serious brain drain. Businesses don't want to open up shop there because of it. We don't want that here. We don't want the rest of the state and the country to see Montrose, a tourism hub in an ag-based area, as a hateful, unwelcoming, and ignorant place. I don't think you are beyond redemption. You have a chance here tonight to acknowledge what you did was wrong, to vote no, and to apologize for using your office in this way. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am? Let her come. She's been waiting. Come on up. I'll get to you next.
My name is Regina Soul. I live about a mile from here on North 6th. Even though the designation "sanctuary" city has been declared a legal term, we still haven't addressed that it has moral implications. Some of you may be thinking that you have now dodged that bullet by default since we are already a "non-sanctuary" city. While you are city councilors, please remember that you are humans first. Migration is a human problem. It's worldwide. Statistics show that these are not just people looking for a better opportunity anymore, but mostly they are fleeing violence from gangs, bullies, dictators, war, starvation, and the effects of climate change. The United States has helped create these problems. We are the ones who sell and supply the guns and bullets that create violence against these same migrants who now need to leave their homes. It is our corporations that have taken other countries' resources, leaving people in poverty and ruining their environment. So now migration is a problem for all of us to solve. Instead, the county has said, "It's not our problem, and I hope that you no longer feel you have to follow suit." To those who say immigrants should come here illegally, have you ever looked at what it takes to get amnesty or citizenship? It's a long, hard, expensive road, and desperate people don't have the means or time to travel on it. Part of the problem is also Congress refuses to pass an immigration reform bill. They haven't for 20 years. If you want immigration support, please support candidates who vote for immigration reform. I'd also like to question, how many undocumented people are already here in Montrose? How many Dreamers do we have? What would this resolution do to them? Let's also remember that President Biden was right when he gave the State of the Union, crimes are not generally committed by immigrants. Most of the crimes are American-born males who have not finished high school. One thing that might help both the homeless and the migrants is in your domain. For one thing, zoning that provides housing in the way of yurts and tiny homes with common outdoor grounds is something that we have the resources to build here. I'd rather help people in need with our tax dollars than give it to corporations who move here and give them tax breaks and subsidies. We need to have policies that back up our values and ideals and how we want the world to look, and I hope that we have a more kind world than what I've heard tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. The gentleman right here first. Yes, sir.
My name is David. My name is David LeBlanc. I'm a jeweler in Montrose, South San Juan Avenue. And I, it's, I've heard about the fear and the loathing. I've heard about the rape, pillage, and looting, and I've heard about how compassionate it is to run child slaves across the border. This is not just a Montrose issue. This isn't just Denver and urban or small town. It's only a matter of time before these hills are filled with dugouts where our hunters, our hikers, won't be able to walk safely through the forest. And it's not a Montrose issue or a Colorado issue. It's a world issue. All of the advanced nations are being forced with this onslaught of illegal immigration from the Third World. I do appreciate compassion on the Third World, but it is not going to help them for us to allow our own civilization to be overwhelmed and collapsed. And this is intentional. There are powers in this world that want to create enough chaos that power structures can be shifted. And so it is time for even us little people, this community of hobbits, has a voice, if we care to use it. Shall we make our statements in proactive language or anti-negative language? That's language issues. But we, the people of Montrose, want to stand up and have our voices heard in the world. Germans don't have that freedom of speech. The Irish, the English, London is now a British minority city, and if you were to say so, you would face jail times. Let it not be so here in America and here in Montrose. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let us speak.
I'll come back to you guys in just a minute.
Good evening. My name is Susan Harotunian Rivnack. I'm a proud second-generation American. My grandfather came here. He would not have been let in through Ellis Island if he did not have a skill to make him be able to take care of himself and maybe half the family, and I'm blessed he did. He survived the genocide in Turkey, where his father, brothers were killed, his sisters were taken and raped, his mother was pushed down with him between her legs. He was raised in orphanage. He looked, learned how to weave rugs, and as he got older, taught other people how to weave rugs. Anyway, with that being said, my father, as he grew up, World War II broke out, and he was working for his father and going to school. He dropped out of high school to join World War II. I'm proud to say he did a fine job, ran the engine room in the USS Satula. I'm so very grateful and proud that my grandfather was able to come here legally, with an education and a skill. And if other people came here legally, with an education and a skill, we welcome. We're all immigrants, for crying out loud. With that being said, we, the people with the United States, have to stand by our Constitution. And our Constitution holds that people come here legally. I just heard that they're going to allow aliens? I don't know what to call people who come here without documentation, but to allow guns? That kind of frightens me. I could go on and on, but I'm going to bow out and say thank you very much for listening to me, and I hope you will do the right thing, as God is watching all of us.
Thank you.
Where we go one, we go all.
Thank you. I believe you've spoken, haven't you? Yes, sir. Oh, you have not? I'm sorry. Come on up.
My name is Jacob Sims. I live on Orange Road. I've spent most of my life in Colorado. My parents moved us out here when I was small. I love the state. The state is an amazing state, and we've made it our home, my wife and my four children. And we grew up in Denver, and I saw what happened in Denver, so we didn't want to go back there after we took our schooling. We came over to the Western Slope because it seemed to have the values that we wanted, and it still seems to have the values that we want. I stand with anybody that wants to declare this a "non-sanctuary" city, because we're arguing, we're not arguing about immigrants, we're arguing about illegal, undocumented immigrants. That means they're criminal by virtue of not going through the channels necessary to come to this country like everybody else that did before them, and it is important that we make a statement that says, "We're not going to tolerate that kind of bending the law, breaking the law, or blatant illegal activity." I have four girls, ranging from 15 to three years old, and anybody else that has little girls knows that they like to go out and they like to shop and play with their friends. It's a pretty safe place to do that right now. I am not comfortable with a whole bunch of people coming into this community that are considered illegal aliens because they did not go through the process of getting proper vetting and documentation and going through the legal proceedings to do that, because I think that those people would endanger our children. I've traveled the world. I'm a doctor. I've traveled the world. I've seen children starving. They've been maimed in other countries. They've been disfigured to become beggars. I've seen horrific things. I've seen dead children in foreign countries. It's tragic. It's horrible, and I feel for those people. They are not our problem. Our problem, the thing that we can change here and now, today, is Montrose. We can protect our home. We can make a difference here for our community. We can bolster the resources and abilities that can be allocated to our community, and we can make a difference here. We always look at the big picture. We can't change the big picture. I've got serious concerns with the direction of the United States. I've got serious concerns with the direction of the state of Colorado. But we can make a difference here. The people, and I'm glad you called the meeting. Somebody said they thought that was a sly thing to do. I think it's great that people needed clarification. I think you did the right thing, and I appreciate that. We needed clarification, and we can make a difference here today. So I would urge you to seriously stand and make that difference. I thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, in the back. You, yes.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to address the council. My name is Rachel Zatterstrom. I live in the North Side neighborhood on North 9th Street. My family goes back in Montrose County, five generations. This consideration of voting for a "non-sanctuary" city does not represent the values that I was raised with. They don't represent the values that I moved home for, and the fear and divisiveness this is causing in our community does not represent the values that I was raised in, and I urge you to not consider this a "non-sanctuary" city. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Lady over here, please.
Hi, my name is Adeline Robinson, and I live on 12th Street. I moved to Montrose about three years ago, and I moved here for a job. I work at the library. I'm a librarian, so information and access to information is really important, and I could talk about all the misinformation that I have just heard from people in this community, but I will keep it short. My parents are immigrants. I'm a first-generation American-born citizen. Immigrants are the backbone of our country, and when looking at Montrose and Olatha, we benefit from the labor of our migrants, whether they are here undocumented or not. What this resolution does is strike fear to our community members who look like me. It does not feel welcoming, but instead positions an entire group of people as scapegoats. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, ma'am. You first? Yes, with the jacket on? And then the lady right behind you, be next.
Hi there. My name is Bianca Diaz, and to be honest, after what I've heard here today, I don't want to say where I live, but it is near the hospital. This resolution is not helpful because it doesn't change anything for our community. I am against it. A loud majority is not always correct, and you do not have to cave to it. Our community has a lot of rebuilding to do in the wake of this resolution. This evening has been difficult, and I didn't even have intentions of speaking. I'm not going to stand up here and fear monger. I think we have a lot of scared people today. Humans want to feel safe, and honestly, I want to use the mic not to address counsel, but to address my neighbors in this room and those watching online, that the words that they have chosen to create a monolith of immigrants is dangerous. I'll echo the sentiment that unless you are of the Nuchu people or Ute blood, you are an illegal immigrant here in Montrose. an illegal immigrant here in Montrose. European immigrants carried out worse or equal violence than we have heard here today. Please vote no.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. You can come up, and then you'll be next, sir, back there.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Maria Valades. I live in Ridgeway. I recently moved there, and I had been a Montrose County resident for over 15 years before my move. I also work for Tri-County Health Network. I am a second-generation American, meaning my parents are immigrants to this country. I am an American citizen because I was born in this country. I feel like I'm a law, I am a law-abiding citizen who did her due diligence by obtaining a higher-level education. My work is out of service, and I serve the Montrose area and its people, including immigrants, undocumented immigrants, who I don't really see being present here today. Immigrants in our community are experiencing hardships. They don't want to ask for help, although they are struggling. They are being taken advantage of, and no, there is not a lot of help available for these people, who most of the time have lived here for years and have contributed to this community for years. I ask that you please consider the immigrants in this community who are not here and are, and I ask for humanity in your consideration. I am an American citizen, and I have often experienced the fear because of what I look like and who my parents are. Many American citizens who I know feel this fear. I also was not going to speak here today, but it's, it's a voice. I have a voice, and so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna state, I'm gonna represent the people that are my parents, are my family members, are my friends in this community. These decisions impact everyone in our community, a community's mental health and well-being, and I ask that you please do the right thing and make your choice by having humanity and consider what, what's at stake in our communities. I love this community. I service this community with heart, and I think that what you're, I think that we have similar values, especially in the Mexican community. We, we have very similar values, values to rural communities, and I think that I really ask that you consider the sentiment, that you consider the people that are, that it's affecting here now in real time, because it's a real impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Can I see a show of hands of who else would like to speak?
Also, someone seems to have left their purse by the stand. So come get it now instead of, or maybe it's not a purse, Ryan. I'm, it's, but there you go.
So just let me check again. Any more people wishing to speak after this gentleman? Okay. You'll be next, and that will be our last speaker? Okay. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak in a second time. I feel that some definitions need to be made. We say sanctuary city. The biblical term of sanctuary city was a city that declared itself a safe place for somebody who was accused of a crime. They could go to that city and not fear punishment for that crime, but yet would still have to face the trial and the jury, if you will, for their crime ultimately. They would have to pay the piper for that. It had nothing to do with an illegal immigrant or anything like that. It had to do specifically with someone who had committed a crime. He was afraid of retribution. He needed a place to hide or to stay where he could say, stay safe while he put together some sort of a defense, if you will. When I looked it up, Wikipedia says that a sanctuary city is a municipality that limits or denies its cooperation with the national government in enforcing immigration law. A city's council and mayor will usually declare itself a sanctuary city and subsequently enact measures, measures and policies that are welcoming and favorable to illegal immigrants. I think by us declaring that we are a non-sanctuary city, we are saying something to the effect that we are not openly, we are not opening our doors to anybody that is here illegally, that we, we, if you want to come into Montrose, if you want to, if you have the process, you're, you're in the process of trying to gain your independent, your citizenship. I understand that that is a very long, involving process, but it is done. It's done frequently, and it's done daily by other people that have worked through the business of becoming naturalized citizens. The immigrants back in the 40s, 20s, and early 1900s, when they came in to America, they came in with the sole purpose of being an American citizen, and being what they could do best was to do whatever they could do to be an American citizen, not to bring in their country and make us change our ways in this country so that we are like the country that they just left. And so I think that our choice of words, non-sanctuary, that that's a good choice, that we're saying only those people who are here legally need to apply. And I think that's where we need to stick it at. Thank you.
Thank you. There was somebody back there. Yes, ma'am. Okay. I'm going to check the room one more time. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? And I'm not asking, this gentleman snuck past me. We normally don't allow people to speak twice in the same evening, but he got his words in. But is there anybody who hasn't spoken that would like to address the council? Sure. You follow this lady, please? Thank you.
Thank you for giving us your time tonight. My name is Amy Dickinson. I live on North Second Street. I also did not plan to speak tonight, and I don't think I'm going to add anything more eloquent to the conversation, but I did want to take an opportunity to provide another vocal voice that opposes the resolution, resolution to declare Montrose a non-sanctuary city. As many stated before, I find the measure divisive, unnecessary, and inspired by fear. I think it sends a message that's anti-immigrant, and I think it makes a scapegoat of an entire group, as someone previously mentioned. Those, I don't think represent, represent the values of the community of Montrose. It certainly doesn't represent what I love about Montrose, and as someone previously mentioned, it doesn't represent the values that I hold as a human being in the community with an entire world of other human beings. So thank you for your time, and I please encourage you to vote no to the resolution.
Just quick. I'm Nancy White. I live around Trout and the highway. I encourage you to vote yes. This, to my friends who have been speaking about the lack of love and fear-mongering, this is not a matter of love. We love our fellow human beings everywhere, and we especially love our Hispanic community. Love them. It is a matter of law, and that is it. I'll leave it there.
Thank you. Okay. I'll give you one more chance, and then we're going to close public comment. I don't see anybody wishing to comment, so.
Do we have anybody in the other rooms?
No, they were checking for, I think everybody's been notified. They just were bringing them through, so I was in touch with them. Yeah. No, everybody that, everybody that wanted to speak, as far as I know, has had the opportunity, right? Okay. If the chief says so, then it's so. So, okay, I will close public comment, and I'll open it up to council discussion, but we're going to take a five-minute break and come back.
That is going to borrow your period of time. I very carefully did not drink any coffee or anything before that.
I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that. I don't like that.
Could I ask everyone to please take your seats? First of all, before we begin council discussion and deliberations, for those of you who had the stamina to stick it out, thank you. Thank you for your comments. I know this is a passionate issue for all of us, and I appreciate your expression, expressing your passion. Obviously, at some point, the council does need to make a decision. Some of you will be happy with that decision, and some of you will not be happy with that decision. My hope is, though, that once that decision is made, we can put this aside and continue on as a community of caring people and recognizing that we do have differences of opinion, and we should express those, and we will express those. But whatever comes out of tonight, I ask you, please, let's join together and move forward. you, please, let's join together and move forward. So with that, I'm going to open this up to council discussion. Who would like to make a few comments? Go ahead.
Like, but pretty much everybody sent a lot of stuff that, let me see my little paperwork here. I'm going to use that one as speaker of some of those, but I'll try and do my best. After, I guess what really upset me, and I have to say, that I was kind of disappointed in the fact that the city council received a lot of derogatory, in my opinion, comments, okay? I felt that was really uncalled for by the opponents to the non-sanctuary city resolution. I also received some phone calls from the same people, the opponents that were opposed to the non-sanctuary, calling me a racist. That really upset me, because I spent some time out in California walking with the farm workers, trying to unionize them, immigrants. And when I came home, hearing Montrose, me and Jose Abada went to banks here in town and demanded that they put bilingual clerks in to help the Mexican community here in town. You know, I felt that the comments that I received were reminiscence of what I went through right here in Montrose, being called a dirty Mexican, a specabener, coconut. So, I, all I can say is that I was really disappointed in the comments, okay? And with that, the comments from council persons and from the local nonprofits. And so, after many conversations that I had with the local residents, longtime residents, because I was born and raised here, and reviewing social media, I still believe that the majority of Montrose support being a non-sanctuary city. And I concur with my original statement of support as a non-sanctuary city. And this is not about our Hispanic residents whom we fully support and value their relationships with them. As I am proud to be a member of the Mexican-American community here in Montrose. And this is about getting resources to our legal citizens. The government can support the immigrants. We have nonprofits here in town that can take care of them. But I believe that it's a responsibility of the city to take care of what I believe are the residents, the legal residents of Montrose called Rado.
Mr. Questman?
Well, I think, I think one of the main components I picked up on tonight was the one gentleman spoke to it as a legal, legal issue, legally was meeting the requirements of our federal laws. So I was the one that made this original motion. And I did that because I felt like we needed to identify the fact that we do not want to harbor illegal immigrants or people who are illegal. There are many, many means for them to get help on the way here. They can go through, they can get green cards. So I don't, I don't think that it's, it's fair to us to allow people who are illegal to have the same kind of rights that the people who are here legal are. So I, I will stick by the motion that I made, and I have no additional comments. Thank you.
This is a very complex issue. A lot of moving parts. And a lot of people reference the thought that, then they mentioned that a resolution without policy change or without funding isn't valuable. It's just kind of posturing, as I think one word I heard. The issue I have isn't us declaring ourselves a sanctuary city or a non-sanctuary city. I am perfectly comfortable acknowledging that Montrose is not a sanctuary city. I am comfortable acknowledging and stating in public that Montrose is not going to be a sanctuary city as long as we have any say in it. What I do have a problem with is the process that we used to get there. The meeting that we did, I felt was far too quick. We didn't allow public comment. We didn't allow input from our citizens, and I have a real issue with that. Our normal process is to go through a work session where our very excellent staff brings us information that is researched, it's thought out, they bring us numbers, they bring us data, and then two weeks later, we vote on it. And we didn't do that. And I feel like that was a failure on our part to follow our own process. Having said that, I don't have any problem, as I said, I don't have any problem with declaring us to be not a sanctuary city. But I feel that the resolution, doing a resolution versus a statement, has been very divisive in our community. I feel that as a city councillor, I was not in, I wasn't elected to divide our citizens. I wasn't elected to create conflict in our community. I was elected to make decisions based on what is for the good of Montrose, all of Montrose, and not to divide our citizens. And because of that, I have no problem, as I say, doing a declaration as a, not a sanctuary city. But I cannot support a resolution to do that.
Thank you, all of you. It's a tough issue. And as Councilman Frank said, there's a lot of moving parts, a lot for us as council members to think about, and how our decision impacts each and everybody, each and every person in this room. And I recognize that. I know that. But as I said a few minutes ago, there has to be a decision. I wish we could find a statement of consensus where we recognize the issues raised by the proponents of the issue, who are very sincere in their concerns. Likewise, I recognize the serious concerns raised by another segment of our community. And they're legitimate. And you can say, well, they shouldn't think like that, or they don't need to think that, or it's not true. But you know what? That is their perception, and perception is reality. And so, I have to take all of those things and put them together and look at it and say, okay, what really is in the best interest of all of our community? Now, this vote tonight, whoever, whatever position you take, you're going to suggest whatever we did was not in the best interest of this community. And you know, I can understand that, because when I'm passionate about an issue, and all I have is myself to speak to the issue and to argue for the issue, I don't have to listen to another side. All I have to do is champion my cause. But that's not what we were elected to do. That's the reason we're sitting here, to represent you, our citizens, all of our citizens. And we have an obligation, not only to feel passionate about what we may think is right, but to understand the passion others have for their beliefs. And so, as I said, I hope you can all leave here tonight with some degree of pride, pride in your community, pride that you got engaged, pride that we can march down the road together as a community, because that's what makes this community great. And our greatness will be tarnished if we cannot do that. So, I hope we join hands after this decision tonight. I, like Mr. Frank, can make a statement that we are a non-sanctuary city. We are not a sanctuary city, because we are not a sanctuary city. But I believe that the divisiveness created by passing a resolution to that effect is unnecessary. We are not inviting whatever term you want to use for these folks that are in this country illegally, that arguably they should not be here, but we didn't bring them here. Our federal government failed us, and we're dealing with the aftermath of that. But we also have to have the human element in our process and what we do and what we say and what we think. And so, while I said, I can make a statement, and I can make a statement that you, Mr. Brown, agree with, and that is, we're not a sanctuary city, and what that means. But I also can understand those of you who are concerned by that statement and the fears and the angst that raises. So when I put all of that together, I cannot support a resolution. I can support a statement that says, we're not a sanctuary city. And that's my position. I hope all of you at least understand where I'm coming from, even if you don't agree with me, because I love this community. This community means a lot to me. It has for over 40 years meant a lot to me. And it's not going to stop now. But I have an obligation, I have a duty as an elected official to make a decision, and that is going to be my decision. Okay, so, the, before us then is the consideration of declaration, of making a motion to approve or deny the declaration to be a non-sanctuary city. So we can entertain a motion to approve or a motion to deny. I will accept a motion.
I'd like a clarification on that. The way that this was written, I think was deceptive, unintentionally, because we're not considering the declaration to be a non-sanctuary city. We're considering a resolution, ratifying a resolution.
We're not considering a resolution.
We're not considering a resolution, so...
No, what we are doing...
I want to clarify what we're actually looking at.
Okay. There was a vote at the previous meeting that said that we passed a motion to declare the city of Montrose a non-sanctuary city, and subsequently to have the declaration memorialized into a resolution. Having done that in an emergency meeting, by law, we have to ratify, if you will, that decision at an open, public meeting regularly scheduled. And if we were to ratify that, then a resolution would be presented. If we, if we do not ratify that, based on the vote of the council, then the issue dies. Now, to your point of, if you want to make a statement, certainly you can do that, or we could do that. But this is, the issue at hand is whether or not to basically ratify the action that we previously took. If we do ratify affirmatively, we have a resolution to then adopt. If we don't, then the issue of the resolution dies.
Very well. In that case, I would move to deny the declaration to be a non-sanctuary city. With the caveat in the statement that I would like us to pursue a statement that our city manager and our city attorney had previously worked on, that states all of the reasons why we are not a sanctuary city.
I have a question for our attorney. If we're ratifying a previous motion, or not ratifying a previous motion, don't we have to have the same motion again?
It doesn't have to be the exact same motion. It's just the ratification. So it doesn't have to be exactly the same. But it, the, the motion was to, was for the declaration to make Montrose a non-sanctuary city. So that is really what's at play here. So, it's to approve or deny that declaration. I just worded it a little differently than to ratify.
Okay. But I mean, does the motion before us need to be a motion to declare we're a non-sanctuary city? Or does, can the motion be whatever we want it to be? And, I mean, I feel like we've already confused so many people by trying this whole double negative thing.
We're even confused.
And so, instead of voting on the same thing again, are we now going to flip-flop it? And then, I mean, I feel like at some point, we're not being very transparent.
Well, I, I, let me jump in, because I, not to be confusing on the issue, but let's go back to what we did on the 7th of March at an emergency meeting. Having taken that action at an emergency meeting, we have to confirm or ratify that motion, the passage of that motion, because it needs to come before a regularly scheduled council meeting for consideration. So I think it is correct to consider this, to either say, I'm, the vote was four to one at the emergency meeting, the vote was whatever it is at this meeting, and depending on the outcome of that vote, it is either ratified or killed. And if ratified, then legal counsel would draft a resolution declaring Montrose as a non-sanctuary city. If we, on essentially second look at this, vote, vote it down, then the issue of the resolution goes away. So we're not voting on a resolution. We're just, we're either affirming or denying the previous action. Is that, would that be appropriate?
Correct. Yeah. So this is either the ratification or not ratifying the declaration to be a non-sanctuary city. I did write it out as to approve or deny. I genuinely thought that would be easier to understand rather than to ratify or not ratify. However, that may have been an oversight on my part, and I do apologize.
So would it, would it be appropriate if Mr. Frank wanted to amend his motion to move to deny the ratification of that?
Or does my motion appropriate the way it was presented?
It's appropriate either way to deny that declaration. That is really what is at hand. Are we ratifying that? Yes or no? It, semantics, if you would like to say, to not ratify the decision, or the declaration, excuse me, to be a non-sanctuary city. You certainly may say that. You may amend that. Or you can say, deny that declaration.
I'm happy with you.
If, if the motion that I made is appropriate and defensible, then I will stand by it.
So there is a motion on the table to deny the declaration. Is there a second?
Again, clarification, because Mr. Frank's motion talked, it, it wasn't that simple. He went on to talk about a statement and all this other stuff.
Yeah, that's not pertinent to this.
Well, it was part of his motion. So I want to know what I'm voting on.
Let me restate the entire thing then, because we're trying to go by what's written down here, but I'm trying to also acknowledge what we're, what we're trying to really accomplish. I would move to deny the declaration to be a non-sanctuary city.
I'll second that. So the motion is to not be one, so I want a yes.
Yours did?
His computer shut off.
Did yours, yours came up then?
I shut my laptop, did you get my vote?
for the entire council.
We couldn't hear what you said.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need either a voice vote from Mr. Yulaberry, or a voice vote from the entire council, whatever you prefer. We're missing the one vote on this.
You can't get hit, okay, then, let's just do a roll call vote.
Okay. Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Doug Lasbell?
No.
Ed Yulaberry?
No.
We have two noes and three yeses.
Counselor, is there anything further on this issue that you would like to discuss?
Well, again, I would like to bring back the idea of readdressing a statement, saying publicly that we are not a sanctuary city. And I think that because of the reasons that our city manager and our city attorney had previously discussed, that I thought was a pretty good statement. So...
Gentlemen, since you voted in favor, but the motion was defeated, are you amenable to a statement such as Mr. Frank is discussing?
I think absolutely.
I think if we're going to have a statement, we don't just, what are we, just doing a motion now for a statement?
No, 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 no. This is just a discussion.
I would love to see one come to us that we could look at and have a little bit more time and careful process.
I would agree with that. I would like to see staff get some additional information from other cities, and I think we also have the Colorado Municipal League that we could garner additional information from. I would have probably liked to have had this come up a couple of weeks or so down the road, so we had some time to do that, so I'd certainly agree with trying to come back with something else.
Me personally, I don't see the difference between making a statement, hey, we are a non-sanctuary city, and I have a decision. I think it's just semantics, and it's just, I think it'd be a waste of time if we're not going to put some people on it, but at least the community and the rest of the state know that we are a non-sanctuary city, then what's the sense in wasting time, city staff and our time again, and the residents' time again, by having to come before the council and listen to what we say, what we don't say.
What I want to avoid here is this, and we owe it to the proponents of this issue, and we owe it to the opponents of this issue, to finalize council's action. And so, perhaps the best way to do that, we each have our opinions, and we each have our own statements of what we have said, would say, so perhaps it would rest better in each individual councilman, to each of us, to make a statement or not make a statement, representing our own personal beliefs on the issue, and not trying to come to a consensus on a statement.
I agree with that.
Definitely.
I absolutely agree with that, it's fine.
Is there any disagreement on that? So, that would mean that we're not going to issue a formal statement from council. Each individual councilperson can make whatever statement they choose to, whatever's in their heart they want to say.
I guess my other question, we haven't given the...
It's your question.
We can't hear you. How about we want, or if you're on the same...
You don't have to do anything. You don't have to, I'm not suggesting, yeah, what I'm saying, we finalize the issue, each individual councilmember can speak or not speak.
I'd like to get some advice from the city attorney. I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session for legal advice.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Ayes.
Ayes. He said aye.
My motion would include a citation that we're going, my motion was to go into executive session for conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice pursuant to Colorado revised statute, section 24-6-402, print 4, print B. That would have been my complete motion.
Okay, all those in favor? Ayes.
They said they weren't going to have any debate. That's right, it wasn't clear.
You have to excuse us.
Let me turn this stuff back on, and we can record.
Oh, I actually have to record, don't I? Okay. All right. Sorry, thank you, I appreciate it. So, as to not skip any agenda, I think we still have staff.
You have a report?
Anybody report, staff? Not on the staff floor, all right.
Counsel comments?
No.
Okay, we're still in open session.
We are.
And Mr. Stockton wanted to...
No, he just wants to see us go out of the meeting.
Oh, oh, okay.
I guess because we could have come out and made a motion.
Gotcha.
And he knows that.
Well, you want to...
I made a motion, we adjourned.
We're adjourned.